Good morning. It's Tuesday, July 9th, 9:30 a.m. If you'd all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You all please still stay standing with like a moment of silence. Last night, Kathy Coran, who's the spouse of Will Coran, used to be our county ESC superintendent, as well as he's our library board member. We had suddenly passed away last night. So we'd like a moment of silence. Thank you. And let's start with a prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us door of wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen.
Amen.
All right.
I would move to approve the minutes of both the July 1st special commissioners meeting and the July 2nd regular commissioners meeting.
All right. And I will second the motion. Any discussion or changes? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. All right. Open up to public comment regarding any of our pending resolutions. Seeing none, we will proceed. Resolutions. Jeremy Senko, you're first on the list today.
Morning, everyone. Two resolutions for consideration today. The first is authorizing the sanitary engineer to obtain an easement for the Medina Road sanitary sewer improvement project. And the second is a resolution authorizing the sanitary engineer to apply for, accept, and enter into a water pollution control loan fund agreement on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners in Medina County, Ohio, for design of Chippewa Lake wastewater facilities and designating a dedicated repayment source for the loan.
Move to approve both resolutions. I will second the motion. And then the second one regarding the Chippewa Lake wastewater treatment plant upgrade. We, as you will note, or some might note within our minutes, that we will be holding a public meeting sometime later this summer with the community, with property holders within that area, as well as the local officials, township trustees, and the village officials as well, to discuss the plan, future expansion plans there. So, roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
We also have two. A commendation commending Bill Jones for his 34 years of service with Medina County, where it has come to the attention of the Board of County Commissioners that Bill Jones has decided to retire from Medina County Sanitary Engineering Department on July 31st, 2024, and whereas Bill was hired on July 23rd, 1990, as a wastewater plant operator and transferred to maintenance worker on July 5th, 2005, whereas Bill was both a loyal and devoted treatment plant operator and maintenance worker during his employment at the sanitary engineers department. He gave his time and dedication to both the profession and his coworkers, and always had an abundance of encouragement and positivity for the team. He was very passionate about his work, and whereas Bill's many years of service to the county residents is greatly appreciated, whereas the Board of County Commissioners wishes to recognize and honor Bill for his commitment and diligent work during his career with the sanitary engineers department. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Medina County, Ohio, that Bill Jones be and is hereby commended for his 34 years of service with the Medina County Sanitary Engineering Department. Be it further resolved that the Board wishes to take the opportunity to offer best wishes to Bill for his retirement. Move to approve. I will second it. And did you want to make any comments? Jeremy?
Yeah. I'm glad that Bill is able to, you know, make his 34 years here. He's been a great employee for this department, and I wish him the best.
Indeed. Thank you for the service. A roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
All right. If you want, Bill, come on up. And if Jeremy, do you want to be part of the picture, too? We're used to having three people on. Congratulations. This is your chance to say a few words.
Like I said, you can... Thirty-four years went by so fast, but I got no complaints. Everybody I ever worked for is real good. And, I don't know. I've got much more to say other than that, you know? But, everybody, good people.
Yes.
Good people.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for...
Okay. Next, Human Resources Director Holly Muren.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On our personal changes resolution today, we have four rate increases, two in sanitary, one at county home, one at job and family services, one leave of absence at office for older adults, and one return from leave at county home.
Move to approve. Second the motion. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Brett Thomas, our finance director.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
I have a total of five resolutions for us today. We're going to start off with print shop revenue for the month in the amount of $958.68. Our second resolution is transfers to the gasoline rotary fund in the amount of $22,005.76. Our third resolution is our vehicle maintenance fund, transfers of $55,533.67. Our fourth resolution is expenses of county officials. We have a trip for Judge Hudson to the Ohio Judicial Conference in Columbus. And finally, our fifth resolution is our weekly bills in the amount of $5,273,768.88.
Move to approve the five resolutions. Second the motion. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right. And next, Chris Jacob, our county administrator. Morning, Chris.
Good morning. Four resolutions this morning. The first one authorizes the design-build process for the construction of a vehicle storage and training facility for the benefit of Medina County Sheriff's Office. Second resolution authorizes the necessary procurement processes for Medina County Sheriff's Office radio tower upgrade projects. This would be a maximum of $400,000 allocated in the revenue replacement ARPA allocation. Third resolution authorizes Medina County Drug Task Force Agency to accept a forfeited vehicle and subsequently dispose of the vehicle. And the fourth and final resolution, again, for Drug Task Force, authorizes the trade-in of two used vehicles on a new model vehicle from Luria Chevrolet Buick.
Move to approve the four resolutions. I will second the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none?
Sorry. We just mentioning, we did have the discussion last week with the sheriff regarding the design-build. That's just the initial phase of going out for the quotes.
That would authorize the advertisement for the request for qualification process, and then the subsequent request for proposal process in order to identify a design-build company that can bring in this project within a budgeted amount.
Great.
I guess to point out that the sheriff has acquired a number of grants for the construction of that building.
Yep. Yep. Hopeful to see that. If the numbers can come in at those numbers, that'd be great.
Yeah, let's hope. Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Um, Hambley?
Yes. Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
We all miss her.
Department updates. Greg Brown, our county home director. Good morning.
Good morning. So, starting with our census today, we're at 45 residents. Staffing, we're currently advertising on Indeed for a PRN LPN and a First Shift Full-Time Aid. However, with our intermittence that we have currently, all positions are being filled at this time. Just some updates with renovations. The flooring is now installed in 1A. It's been our renovation project for the end of last year and starting to this year. It's done, along with the breakroom hallway was done by InterFinish as well. Maintenance is there now, finishing up the ceiling tiles. They'll reinstall the handrail. And then I'm working with Nate Epic from the Park District to get some pictures of parks that the residents go walk in as decorations for the hallway. One of the other big things for the county home, our website is now accessible through the county website. We have our own tab now. We're official. And that was through proximity marketing. Our garden is doing well. We've already had our first crop of yellow squash and zucchini. They'll be eating that this week. Some of the donations, we've had Sharon Women's Club brought some Fourth of July pillowcases. We've had flowers in memory of loved ones dropped off, clothing for specific residents, produce from local churches, hymn books from one of our volunteers who sings at the home, Claudia. And then our standard one's Crop King with the warm weather and sunshine, getting lots of hydroponic lettuce, tomatoes, and cucumbers. And then also Panera from the Holy Martyrs Food Pantry. One of the other new additions at the home is our, it's new to us, our new transit van, which is replacing our ice cream truck. What an upgrade. More space, lifting capabilities, increased seating. It's great. Some of the events that have happened in June and coming up in July, we had the 4-H Pet Pals and the 4-H Petting Zoo. Nate Epic came with his family, brought the family goat along, Holly. Access the Arts has been doing what they normally do for us, a lot. Concert on the Square, which was done here in Medina this time instead of at Sharon Center. Also a craft. Local church did a root beer float. Then we had our summer celebration. That's where we've combined those two, was all in one, was done at the home. But this year, we tried something different. We brought in food trucks. So the Hokkuliya shave ice truck came in for dessert, and we did JT's barbecue truck for the main meal. The Friends of Medina County Home paid for the residents to have that. Balloon art and Access the Art provided a singer for the event. Excellent time. Pavilion is definitely used a lot during the summer. Trips to local parks all this summer, some of the three biggest ones besides Buckeye Woods, which is right next door, Hubbard Valley, River Styx, and Onslager. I never get that one exactly pronounced correctly. Okay, good.
Say it quickly.
Right, and just go say it quickly. Picnics on the patio. Oh, hey, we always try to get our residents over to those. And then Captain Tracy from the Salvation Army has been conducting Bible studies as well.
Oh, nice.
One of the last things that we did, we always try to get back, so feeding Medina County. Some of our residents and our custodian go over there, box food for a couple hours. In July, the Clutters had their Memorial Day, summer, or excuse me, Christmas in July and Fourth of July party here just recently. Excellent. As always, lots of prizes and great snacks and high energy for the residents. Access the Arts will be doing a craft, a bonfire, and then there's a concert at the Sharon Center now, now that it's open again. And then the Litchfield Band is coming, which that is a tradition spanning many decades.
Yeah. Great. Super. All right. Very good. Well, thank you. Are you, is the county home open to having the Medina Kiwanis come back out again this year as they have a pavilion trip?
Every year, absolutely.
I'll have to coordinate that with you as well.
I was gonna say, August is fast approaching.
Yep. Thanks, Greg.
Great. Thank you.
Super. Thanks. All right. So, on Water Conservation District Manager Eric.
Good morning.
Good morning. All righty. Well, since my last update in April, our office has been on 49 technical events, including 16 drainage visits, five pond permit applications, five stream management visits, six erosion issues, two landowner INEs, 12 pond management visits, three pollinator initiative visits. Education events include our office presenting at Montville's Earth Day Celebration at Austin Badger Park. I presented on grazing for OSU's small farm program. Our office was out at Buffalo Creek Retreat for the Earth Day Festival. Our office assisted in the Area 2 Envirothon out at Wayne County. Our annual tree sales pass out was at Geigs Orchard that took place on April 26th and 27th. We distributed 13,630 trees to be planted out in the community. There was a presentation on gardening for wildlife at the Medina Library on May 9th. Also, May 9th, our technician taught soil structure to the Sprouts Youth Group. Our native plant sale took place on May 17th and 18th. Our office was able to sell 64 kits that will be planted out in the community. May 21st, our technician was one of the presenters for OSU's Pond School. The Medina Library, there was a presentation on invasive species management on May 23rd. Our spring fish sale took place on May 31st. We passed out 26,916 fish to people out in the community. On June 22nd, our office hosted a composting workshop at the Medina Rec Center. April 22nd, June 1st, and June 2nd, we held presentations regarding our invasive buyback program. The buyback program is a collaboration between the SWCD and the Park District aimed at improving watershed health by encouraging homeowners to remove invasive species from their property. Any Medina County residents can participate by removing a designated invasive plant from their property. The focus is on calorie pair, but any shrubs or trees on the ODA's website of invasive species can be accepted. The submission deadline is August 30th. All that information and how to participate is on our website. Our new stream stewardship certification program is currently underway. This program focuses on the health and quality of our streams in Medina County. Five classes have already been held, including a stream cleanup and invasive species pull. The stream cleanup took place in Champion Creek here in Medina City. Our class participants and staff removed 760 pieces of trash from the stream, including bottles, cans, cigarette butts, glass wrappers, and some construction material. On June 21st, I attended NOAACA Business Community Rural and Emerging Leaders Advisory Council Meeting. We received updates regarding NOAACA's air quality, public education outreach efforts, their latest Go Ohio Commute Challenge, and they informed us that NOAACA is not in favor of the Boston Mills-Boston Road interchange on I-71. None of the committees had enough attendees for a quorum, so no voting could happen at that meeting. Our deadline for H2 Ohio VNMP, which is voluntary nutrient management, sign up was June 28th. We currently have three producers in the H2 Ohio program totaling 806 acres here in Medina. We have begun work on the VNMP development and continue to receive training from ODA regarding the My Farms platform that the program is running through. The Muskingham Cover Crop Program sign up deadline is tomorrow. Producers in Muskingham watershed can sign up a maximum of 200 acres and receive $12 per acre for implementing cover crops on their farms. Upcoming events, our office will be set up at the fair in the Ag Building again. Monday, the 29th, we assist with the Hay Show judging that takes place at 9:00 a.m. Our booth this year is on soil health and water infiltration, so be sure to stop out and talk to our board and staff. August 15th, we are partnering with ODNR and the Medina Parks to host a wildlife workshop out at Leitha House Park. August 25th, we are presenting to junior leadership out at our office. We will be using our demonstration gardens to showcase the benefits of native plants and the importance of stormwater infiltration. September 26th will be our fall fish sale, so keep an eye out for our newsletters, which will have our order forms, and it will also be on our website as the date gets closer. September 27th, our office has a booth at OSU's Ag Day that takes place at the fairground. Middle schoolers from Wadsworth will be learning about potential ag careers, and we will be discussing soil health at our booth. We're in the middle of our supervisor nominating season. If you're 18 years old, reside in Medina County and have a passion for conservation, please consider running for our board. A board member serves a three-year term and guides our office in conservation needs of the county. I can be contacted directly for any questions regarding the elections. Our July board meeting will take place on the 17th at 1:30 at our office. It is open to the public, and always feel free to reach out to our office for any conversations, questions, or presentations, anything conservation-based.
Eric, do you just have one board seat open this year?
We will have two. We have one board member running for reelection and then another who has decided to retire. He's been on our board coming up 33 years.
Who's that?
Steve Fulton.
Steve Fulton.
Yep. So, he's...
It's just a Phil.
Yeah. You're not kidding.
Great.
All right. Any questions?
Thanks, Eric.
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next, open to public comment? Nothing? All right. Very good. We'll move forward. Discussion session. Chris, what do you have?
The first is the paving project at Adam Building here. We opened bids, or the county engineer on our behalf opened the bids last week. Bid results, I think Matt had sent you a summary and the spreadsheet. I'll share again the spreadsheet with you. In summary, there were three bid packages. One was bid package number one, which was the lot that exits off of Liberty Street. The bid, low bid, came in at 202,603.25. The estimate was 240,535. We had budgeted $250,000 for paving this year in the capital improvement fund, so that's certainly within that range of fund availability. There was also a proposal two, which was the concrete and asphalt mix of the remaining portion of the lot, the larger portion. The estimate was 372,137.50 for that. The low bid came in at 332,241.25. And then the all-concrete proposal two A for the larger section was estimated to come in at 658,100, and the low bid was received at 490,163.75. So if we were to proceed with just awarding the bid for proposal number one, we would award it 202,603.25. It would be concrete paving for, again, just limited to the section that exits off of Liberty Street. If we were to proceed somehow with proposal one and two, the total of that would be 534, 844.50. And if we were to proceed with one and two A, the total required would be 697,781.25. So we are going to have to make a decision as to an award for this bid. I can tell you that, again, we had budgeted 250. The estimated, we had budgeted 750 for the restroom renovation project. The current estimate is a little below 600 for that. So there is that additional 150 there for a total availability of approximately 400,000. If we were to go with one and two, we would have to come up with another 135,000 approximately. Can we identify available funds for that purpose? I believe we can. It would be an additional transfer out of the general fund into the capital improvement fund. For the first six months of this year in the general fund, our revenue is running approximately $500,000 ahead of where we thought it would be at this time. And so I would be comfortable recommending an additional transfer into capital improvements if you wish to proceed with that. The other one may be a little more pricey and difficult to fund, but I believe we can still probably identify available funds for that also.
But that would involve all concrete?
That would involve all concrete, yes.
All concrete, which obviously has longer durability, longer life than the asphalt.
Correct.
So I guess that's the trade-off, certainly.
Yes.
What is, we talked about this when we first were putting the, our PDA, the expected timeline for the, life expectancy for the asphalt?
I don't have that in front of me. I apologize, but I can get that to you certainly. And you don't have to make a decision today. Obviously, I'd have to present a resolution at the next meeting.
Right. So we're scheduled next week, not to meet on Tuesday, but on Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday, I presume that would be sufficient time to take action, you think?
I think at this point, I think the county engineer is looking for us to at least verbally notify.
Got it.
So that they can get it scheduled, so that we can get this done by the end of fall.
I guess my preference would be to move forward with the full project, and I'd lean toward the concrete one, but I also recognize the savings if we do the asphalt. So if we can somehow quantify that the, we're not going to spend more on that asphalt in the time that would take us to replace the pavement, then I'd go with that and do the full thing for the part concrete, part asphalt, and save a couple dollars. But if that's not going to be the case, I'd say we eat the frog now and put the concrete in, so.
Eat the frog now? Okay.
I'm just shaking my head.
When you eat a frog, you just gotta eat the whole frog. You just gotta eat it.
Okay. Not usually on my menu.
That's why I eat it all at once.
Okay.
Nobody enjoys it.
See, I tend to grab, I tend to see if we can afford the option with the concrete. We are making some major changes to that parking lot. Either way, we're moving those islands. We're also putting the change in the entranceway, putting, making sure that people, in terms of the disabled, we have that parking.
Correct.
And then also the routing for the treasurer's drop box.
Correct.
Rerouted rather than here. So I know we've got a lot of changes. My preference is, whether you call it a full frog or not, I just, at this point, I gravitate towards if we can find a way to afford to be able to do the concrete. I'd rather do that now.
Yeah.
And then have that set for hopefully decades with other, without other major...
I'll endeavor to try to get some additional info regarding maintenance and life of the project.
Okay.
To you before the end of the day or early tomorrow morning.
Okay.
And then if you could take a look at that.
Will do.
Get back to me.
Sure.
And then we can get a resolution prepared for next week.
Next week.
Based on your decision.
All right.
Informal decision at that point, but...
Got it.
Okay?
All right.
Thank you. And then the second and final item, as you know, we had sent out vehicle use spreadsheets to all the departments.
Sure.
And offices that had vehicles either leased or owned by the county, Board of County Commissioners. So we were asking for them to identify the purpose of the vehicle within their departmental fleet, the frequency of use of the vehicles, the odometer reading, and the condition of the vehicle. So we had provided two deadlines, depending on the size of the fleet. So smaller ones, we, two Fridays ago was the deadline for submission of that, and then last, I believe last Friday was the submission for the larger fleet information. We have received all but three of those back, so I was hoping to get this in front of you by today. We're still waiting for the auditor to submit, the sheriff, and Drug Task Force. I know that Matt has been in contact with all three of those, and he's been told they've been working on them. So that's an update, and hopefully by the end of this week, we can get something to you for your review.
Okay. Very good.
Okay. That's all I had this morning. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for your work on the other, the two bid items for the sheriff. I know those were kind of late adds to the agenda, but glad we got them in.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep. Super. All right. Anything?
Yeah, if you'll indulge me this morning.
Sure.
There was, over the weekend, there was, and we received some emails about it as well, an article in The Plain Dealer related to a, and more conceptual at this point, just kind of a, I think they called it a thought experiment, related to a possible sales tax, regional sales tax proposal to fund sports stadiums, and also improvements to the airports in both Cleveland and Akron. I'll leave it to folks. I'm sure some people have reviewed it, some people maybe haven't, but just, we were reached, there was an inquiry if we had any comments or thoughts on that, and I directed the person from Cleveland.com that reached out to tune into our meeting today because I thought we might be discussing it. So I just wanted to offer... it, so, um, I just wanted to offer my perspectives on it. First, the, the premise to me was a bit faulty. I, I don't know that the notion that public funds are inherently necessary for public arenas and stadiums is, is one that I agree with. Um, I, I, I also tend to reject the sentiment that if we were capable of pulling that kind of regional collaboration together, and it were actually possible, that the most appropriate use of those funds would be building sports stadiums for owners that generally have billions of dollars, uh, of their own. Ten years ago, Cleveland actually committed public funds to improvements at the Browns Stadium, and the end result, as I could tell as a, a person who goes to the games, was, uh, scoreboards that were shaped like the state of Tennessee, and the on-the-field product didn't exactly improve either. So, um, that wasn't a great ROI from, from my vantage point. But even as just kind of a thought experiment, the structural flaws are, are pretty obvious to see. It's easy for Cleveland or Kiowa County to look to Medina or Geaga or Portage County and the surrounding counties and identify us as merely beneficiaries of the athletic, cultural, recreation, and culinary offerings that the region has. Um, certainly, we have people in Medina County who make their homes here, uh, specifically to take advantage of those things, and I, and I, I don't deny that. But it also overlooks that, um, many of those, many of those people are also active contributors, uh, to keep those organizations here. We have season ticket holders, we have some of the larger, in fact, maybe even largest, uh, institutional donors. You see names of, you know, the Westfield Group or RPM or, you know, these, these various organizations, um, all, all over these, these organizations and institutions. So I would argue that, um, the outlying counties are already doing their share to provide an environment in which these organizations can thrive, even if we aren't footing the bill for the cost of the stadium or the venues in which they perform. And as I read the article, I, I, I really, as you probably can tell by now, bristled at the notion that our citizens are just passive consumers of those benefits. I, I just don't see that being the case at all. Um, it, it also tends to overlook the ancillary benefits that come from having seventy thousand people at a football game or thirty thousand people at a basketball game, or in the case of the Guardians, a few hundred people at a baseball game. Uh, sorry, sorry, that was a cheap shot. But, uh, I, I do, I didn't see anything, and I know, again, it's just a thought experience, experiment at this point, but, uh, I don't presume there'd be any offsetting contribution of those dollars coming back to our county either. You know, bed tax dollars or other, um, perks that come with having the influx of, of people that, that come into the region for something like that. So, um, don't want to hold it too, too much to task because it was just kind of a, a, an overview, but, um, I didn't see that in the proposal, and I don't expect we'd be, we'd be, um, the beneficiaries of that, um, in the case where we'd share the benefits that are more localized to those areas, uh, where those billions of regional dollars would be invested. So that, that's another, uh, cause for concern. Finally, I realize this all sounds like a lot of what's-in-it-for-me-ism, and that was, um, kind of identified as the past versions of these plans have, have been derailed by that. But when the idea of creating what would presumably be a permanent tax increase, um, that would generate a new regional bureaucracy is being floated, I think those are the exact kinds of questions that local elected leaders have an obligation to ask on behalf of our taxpayers. And for true regional collaboration to flourish in the way that would be necessary for a plan like this to be viable, the collective benefits need to flow to the entire region, and those benefits must go beyond shiny new stadiums and airport, airports and a renewed civic pride. Simply put, it's fair for the Medina, Geaga, Portage, Ashtabila interests to ask some of these tough questions, since not one of our communities has an arena, a stadium, or an airport that would be subsidized by this plan. Too often, our counties are brought into these regional conversations for our ability to provide one thing, and that's money. Plain Dealer's proposal, while a fun thought exercise, would keep Medina County in a very familiar role as a net contributor with very little direct benefit to show for its involvement. And I've sat through enough NOACA Board meetings where the federal funding pie is all but divvied up before projects in Medina or Geaga, or even the rural portions of Lake County are considered to support a plan that subjugates Medina County to a more broad regional government entity, particularly one that has taxing authority, where our financial contributions would far outweigh even the indirect benefits that we may eventually reap. I, uh, I should also say that I really did want to like the idea, but at the end of the day, as, uh, even somebody who loves the Browns and is open to outside-the-box problem-solving, it, uh, it couldn't prevent me from being offended by this at an almost primal level. So I thought I'd share that with you, because it was, as I read through it, it bothered me at various, uh, various ways. So, uh, those are my thoughts on it. I don't know if you have anything to add, but, uh, that's, that's really kind of how I, how I come down on it from a, a preliminary perspective at least.
I, I would agree, it was a reporter actually appearing to ask for our opinions, which is kind of interesting, and...
Which I was too happy to provide.
Yeah, obviously, and I, I certainly concur with your sentiment and, uh, your, your approach to it. Obviously, uh, well, Medina County, when we've had the opportunity that, to, uh, when we've looked to increase, uh, sales tax, we've always asked the voters, so we've asked the voters of the county. Where our county, uh, when we were, the last time we raised a sales tax, where we had the authority to go to the voters, it went to education. We invested in our kids, we invested in our future. Uh, at the same time, Kiowa County and Cleveland were raising their sales tax to basically, I'll just say subsidize, uh, making wealthier people, millionaires even richer, uh, for the purpose of, of sports, and, uh, it, it's not an economic benefit that's distributed throughout the region. Everybody in our, I think, believe, I, I think we're proud that, that when we look to the use of public dollars, uh, there is a common benefit. I don't think there would be a common benefit up there. It literally would benefit a select few, and every consumer in Medina County that would have to pay that additional quarter percent, uh, ends up, you know, I'm not sure that they would get a similar benefit from any of that, uh, even in the, in the long term. I don't believe it would be, it would be justified. Uh, I fear the approach of forming, uh, a, a regional governance structure, we would oversee that, it would take a significant change in state law. There is no provision that would allow that kind of county organization.
Right.
Funding various things such as stadiums, airports, I think we were asked about an airport, there were minor league stadiums, uh, they were talking about, so they were trying to just spread it, spread around like peanut butter, uh, just everybody benefits, so they're, well, uh, obviously, I think, uh, we, we've spoken in the past, our voters have spoken, and I truly believe that, uh, this is, this is just a, a pie in the sky. It's an interest, as you say, it was an interesting experiment to think about it, uh, but I can think of better uses for public dollars, frankly, and better needs than, um, what they're actually espousing. And our people already are, in a substantive way, contributing to those enterprises, whether they be over, over to, uh, over to Akron, to their, uh, their stadium over there, or go to Cleveland, uh, the cultural, when you go look at all that, we already are contributing, financially, for those that can afford. And frankly, that's the way it ought to be, and I don't think we ought to be taxing everybody that doesn't get that benefit, so. But that, I, I concur with that statement, and I was...
Thank you for indulging me.
Yeah, no, no, that's, that's all right, I, I wanted to respond, but I just like, no, it's, I, I'm not sure that, other than saying no.
Yeah.
And, and, um, she wants to print that, that's fine.
Well, it, it, and it has been, I mean, the, the, there was a reference in the inquiry that I think we both got, um, related to when the Browns moved, you know, that there was some concept of this that was floated back at that time. I don't know if Stan, you may be familiar with that or not, but, um, it seemed then it, it was one of those that was, it was just a very preliminary discussion, and it never really got into the substantive stages, and these are probably all the reasons why it would have a hard time getting there, because it, you know, the, the, the willingness for community A to contribute tax dollars needs to go along with the, the willingness of community B to contribute benefits to, to the group too, and if, if that's not a two-way street, it's just a really hard, hard thing to think about getting off the ground.
Well, unfortunately, those, those are power in the past, when we had, I'll just say more accessible and regional facilities like, uh, the Coliseum in Richfield, uh, had some benefit. I grew up, I mean, in the seventies and eighties and nineties when it was in existence, great facility, and then they, uh, they were able to acquire state subsidies to...
Right.
Bring it back to Cleveland, uh, after all that major investment, and now, of course, the land's vacant and so forth. Uh, you can see all the roadway improvements that were made there. They basically have maintained, but they don't have that kind of traffic like they did back, back then. So I remember, actually, uh, one of my graduation ceremonies, the University of Akron, I think it was for my masters, uh, was there at the Coliseum, so, uh, and it's a shame, because they used to, that they have the political, uh, if you will, ability to, um, I'll say, have those in, in Columbus, um, kind of direct a lot of state dollars there.
Well...
A lot of incentives, and we don't have those, that kind of influence.
Specific to the football stadium too, right? There's, there's state money now that's going to be going for the, the land bridge to the stadium potentially, right?
Yes.
And the future of that stadium's very much in doubt, even with, with or without this current conversation. So it's, it is an interesting regional question. Uh, I'm certainly willing to, to sit down and take meetings and, and be part of a solution, but it, these are all the things, these are all the questions I'm going to ask, whether I'm in that room, or I'm in this room, or any other room in between.
I think it speaks to us, what's important to us.
Right.
And Medina County, what's important to us is our children, our education, our institutions here.
Correct. Great, thank you.
All right, but thank you, all right.
There goes our chances of, of wrapping up a quick meeting in Colleen's absence.
Yeah, I know, I know, and they're probably unlikely to ever want to move a stadium here either. Uh, and, uh, okay, uh, do you have anything else?
That's all I had.
Okay, I, I'd like to mention, you might notice I'm, I'm wearing, it's, it's the America two fifty Ohio pin, it's the Ohio Semi-Quintennial Committee, uh, Commission. Uh, I happen to be a, a, a voting member on that, but the Medina County Historical Society recently received a grant, uh, for publishing and compiling and publishing a history of Revolutionary War veterans that have settled here as well as their family history. And I'm asking publicly, if anybody knows of, have done a, their own, uh, family histories and knows, uh, or, uh, information that can be, uh, assembled as part of this, please , uh, contact either our office or the Medina County Historical Society. Uh, the idea is to publish this, uh, next year. There are some local historians that will be putting together some of those stories about, uh, those, uh, individuals that served in the Revolutionary War and then came settled here, either by virtue of, uh, of, of getting entitled to land or the pensions that they brought here, they brought their families, settled here, and we've got some great, great family histories that have, uh, heretofore not been related, and I think, uh, to celebrate America's, uh, two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday, uh, in, in two years, uh, that there'd be a nice, nice to have a, that local history. So the grant they received, uh, is for publishing that and putting that, make sure that every county li, every library, uh, as well every, every school library and, and disseminate, uh, that kind of, uh, the, the historical story of these families that, uh, settled here and what they contributed to our great county.
That's great.
All right.
Great program.
All right, uh, I've got nothing else to add.
I will move to adjourn.
Okay, uh, second, roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. Everybody have a, a good week, we'll see you next week. And our next week is on Thursday, not Tuesday.